Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the September 30, 2015 zoning Board of Adjustment meeting. And Tony, would you lead the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to God, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rich, would you read the preamble?
Absolutely. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. For the benefit of those who have not attended these hearings, the procedure is as follows: The petitions will be heard in the order they were posted in a legal notice; however, the chairman may change the order with consent of the board to expedite the public hearing as appropriate. The board will treat all petitioners, their representatives of butters, and other interested parties fairly and with respect. We allow each petitioner to state why his or her petition should be granted. Following the petitioner's statement, any abutter or interested party is allowed to speak for or against the petition. In the interest of getting all the facts, we will go around a second time. The board may list a testimony at any point, but we cannot allow cross-discussion. All questions must be directed to the board. Also, we ask that you do not repeat yourself or your neighbor's testimony. If you wish to indicate concurrence, please do so. After hearing all the facts regarding a petition, the chairman will close the public hearing, and the board will deliberate and vote on the petition before moving on to the next petition. You can expect fairness and impartiality by this board. The zoning board is empowered to legalize the breaking of the town zoning ordinance, and this is not done lightly. State law and local ordinances set out the criteria that must be met in order for this board to grant your petition. I remind you that it is your responsibility to prove your case so the board has justification for granting the petition. The minimum requirements are listed in the form you received from the community development office, and it would be helpful if you would proceed on that basis. Please turn off all cell phones and pagers if you have them.
You can swear, ma'am.
Okay. And would all those who plan to testify please stand up to be sworn in? Okay? You just please raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God? All right, thank you.
All right. One of the members of the board, it looks like she's going to be late. So, right now, we're going to have four members, four voting members, and if you would like to stay and your case comes up, again, I will remind you that we only have four members, and if it's a two-to-two tie, then it's automatic a vote against your petition. So, to move on, I would like to take number six, the Sanford Survey and Engineering, and Gene and Ralph Reed, a variance petition, as putting it the first petition that we hear tonight. Does any member have a problem with this?
Motion to move item number six to the front.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, the first variance that we're going to hear tonight is the Sanford Survey and Engineering Incorporated petitioner, and Ralph and Gene Reed owners, variance under section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit a subdivision of one lot into two lots with less than the required minimum areas, 70,385 and 43,571 square feet, whereas 100 square feet is required. The frontage is 150 feet and 133.03 feet, whereas 250 feet is required. The parcel is located at 50 Wilson Hill Road in the R1 residential in Aquifer Conservation Districts, tax map 4B, lot 105, and our case 2015-35. And who will be speaking on this?
Secretary of State.
Yes. All right. Would you please come in and sign? Oh, he hasn't sworn in, okay.
Can you please stand? Raise your right hand? You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Come on in, sign in. Thank you.
Okay, and just for your information, the fifth member is here, so we do have a We're moving it up as a courtesy to some of the people here. Tim, is it permissible to read something into the minutes, even though it's the petition isn't up, but this isn't being presented at this time? So, we can have it?
You could have to open the hearing, which you have done. You could then allow for that to be read into the record, and then close the, or table the hearing until later in the evening when the applicant arrives, or its normal spot on the agenda. But you would have to open and then table the hearing in order to do so.
All right, thank you. Okay, we'll just be a moment. Patrick's going to check with a couple here, reference.
You said, "like the..."
No, we have a couple with a newborn here, and we're trying to help them out a little All right, we are going to table this and put it back into the regular rotation. Is that easier for you?
That's, well, it's easier for my client, so I appreciate that.
Now, is Gene going to testify? Do you know?
If there's a question, she certainly would be ready to answer it. So, I guess I'm expecting it's more than that.
Okay, thank you. All right, then we'll proceed with the first petition. Is Maddie Shurey? Petitioner-owner, variance under section 2.02.13E4A of the zoning ordinance to permit an enclosed porch 10 feet from the front property line, whereas 30 feet is required. The parcel is located at 480 Daniel Webster Highway in the Town Center Overlay C1 Limited Commercial in Aquifer Conservation Districts, tax map 5D-3, lot 046, case number 2015-32.
Good evening.
Yes, Mike?
My client and friend, Bobby Schwerer, says he's not involved in Mr. Schwerer's application.
Can you make sure the green light's on? I'm sorry.
My firm hasn't been involved in Mr. Schwerer's activity with the property to date, but since I had nothing better to do tonight, I tagged along, so. So, I'll be presenting his application. This is an application that you, property that you're all familiar with. In fact, you approved a special exception for, to permit a restaurant use on the property several months ago.
Steve, before you go any further, would you read the reasons for the variance, please, first?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
The subject tonight's application is variance under section 2.02.13E4A of the Merrimack zoning ordinance to permit an enclosed porch 10 feet from the front property line, whereas 30 feet is required. The parcel is situated at 480 Daniel Webster Highway in the Town Center Overlay C1 Limited Commercial in Aquifer Conservation Districts. The property is located on map 5D3, lot 46, in its case 2015-32.
No, it's the points of law that he filled out, the five points?
Yeah, I will get to those.
Oh, okay.
So, as I was saying, the property is a former Pizza Man restaurant. As you're all familiar, it was Bergen's Cards for a while. Mahdi's owned that property now for almost 10 years?
Twelve.
Twelve years? And obviously, he was before this board several months ago and obtained a special exception to resume a restaurant use of the property. Since then, he's been on to the planning board and has received conditional site plan approval on September 15 for the change of use. What brings us here this evening is during this process of planning, designing, and so forth, Mahdi has engaged the services of an architect who, his intention always was to utilize the volume and floor area of the front porch that was there for Pizza Man in some way, shape, or form. That porch, as it sits there today, extends approximately 6 and 1/2 feet from the plane of the structure proper outward towards DW Highway. For several reasons, including code compliance, his architect has identified the need and desire to have that extend to approximately 10 feet. I believe in your packet, you have a copy of a drawing that was Mr. Schwerer's site plan that he had presented to the planning board. You'll see off the northeasterly corner of the proposed new porch, a stair that extends out towards DW Highway as a secondary means of egress and access from that space that would be constructed in lieu of the existing porch. The existing porch that's there today will be demolished, razed in its entirety, and replaced by what amounts to an atrium that will take its place extending 10 feet instead of 6 and 1/2 feet off the, towards DW Highway. The variance application that was submitted called for 10 feet. It may end up being slightly less than that when the final architectural design is done. He requested 10 feet at the suggestion of his architect as she was completing the design. Today, there's approximately 20 feet from the face of the porch to the westerly line of the DW Highway right-of-way. For those of you familiar with the property, recall that when Pizza Man was open, there used to be parking there, and people would come back and forth off the street. That is not part of Mr. Schwerer's proposal, and would not have been approved by the planning board even if he had proposed it, I'm quite certain. The five points of law that relate to this, we believe that the granting of the variance that Mahdi seeks was not contrary to the public interest for several reasons, perhaps the greatest of which is the reinvestment that's occurring in the property. Obviously, that property has been there for a long time and needs a facelift. This is the facelift there, right in the center of town, that can take a property that has aged, I guess is an appropriate word, and bring it back around to be an asset to the community, especially at a critical location like that with a new construction. It's planned removing a porch. One of the reasons it's being, is there's structural issues with it. This will be new construction that will be replacing it. We feel that that is in the public interest. The spirit of the ordinance will be observed.
Over. East, good. Between each item, we need to stop between each other. Please, thank you. Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead. Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Why don't you go ahead?
I can continue.
Thank you, Patrick. We believe the spirit of the ordinance will be observed in this case, in part because the structure that exists there today predates the ordinance. I mean, this is a classic example of how to do adaptive reuse of pre-existing non-conforming structures. Obviously, there's sections of the ordinance that deal with that. In this particular case, we're seeking a variance to cure that deficiency in this way. The building proper is within 30 feet of DW Highway. The existing porch is approximately 20 feet from DW Highway. Couldn't do anything with that piece without a variance here. Also, for the orderliness, the area that it's being used, the area that is now pavement through that area, the pavement will be removed, the area will be landscaped, and it will create curb appeal that goes to new construction as opposed to the former construction when that was completely used as the main entrance to a restaurant some 20-plus years ago. Any questions?
I'm also. Tony? Rich?
So, I'm scratching my idea. So, you're moving the paved area that's in front of it and then putting lawn there in its place?
Landscaping, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
Rich, because of the difference in elevation that's going to occur, the elevation of the atrium will match the floor area of the building. It'll be an equal elevation. Beyond that, coming towards DW Highway, there'll be, I think, a terrace wall, a vertical wall, that will have landscaping both atop it and beneath it, extending from the face of the wall outward to the edge of the right-of-way. So, that area that's been paved over the years, that will all be disappearing.
Actually, that perfectly answers my question. I was just trying to think in my head how that's going to look with the slope, but that makes sense.
Yeah. I'll pass this around, this for the board. I don't know if this was in your packet or not, as I didn't prepare the application. Let's get to your field of what's going on. Share that with other members. Do you want to have it? Mahdi gave me that when he was trying to explain to me what he was building. That was prepared by his architect. For a variety of the reasons, I may sound repetitive here, but we feel substantial justice will be done through the granting of this to allow this adaptive reuse and reinvestment in the property. Obviously, this is a property that had been a commercial property, had been a residential property, back to a commercial property, mixed-use property, and now you're familiar with this proposal. You know, the building sits there in the center of our town, and in order for something to happen there, the economic engine that creates the opportunity for, to invest some money in the building and have a favorable outcome in terms of aesthetic appeal and function, this variance will help take that a long ways. The inside of that atrium that will be replaced, the uncovered porch will be heated space, it'll be open for patrons to eat there inside the atrium 12 months a year, and then pretty much everything beyond that 10 feet is window dressing for in the form of the retaining wall, the obligatory stair that goes down to grade at street level for egress and so on and so forth, which is the 10-foot penetration that is, it makes the magic number that's part of the application, not the atrium itself. The actual new construction will actually come out about 4 and 1/2 further than the current building does, the actual building space. So, we feel that taken together, you know, with the investment that's being made in the property, the betterments to the property, the added tax revenue possibilities, and a successful business in town at, again, a very critical location in terms of aesthetic appeal driving up and down DW Highway, that substantial justice will be achieved through the granting of this variance. Number four, I think speaks for itself, and this is diminution of value. We don't believe a diminution of value will result as a result of the project or the variance that we seek. Again, it comes to the reinvestment in the property and the betterments to the property that will occur. Success breeds success. An attractive property is always more valuable from not only the owner, but for those around it in terms of comps and everything else that relates to commercial real estate than a troubled property. And in this particular case, with the investment that's being made in the property and the betterments that will result from the property and, which will be enhanced by, through the granting of this variance, to allow the face of the building that people see driving by, the front door of the business, so to speak, to have the attractive outcome, we feel will actually enhance rather than detract from the property values of not only the subject property, but those that surround it.
Any questions, Lou Bor? No? Number five?
The hardship issue. Owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance, we believe would be an unnecessary hardship. We believe that because of the fact that we're dealing with a building that was constructed prior to the zoning ordinance. The main building was constructed pre-modern zoning. So, essentially, the front of that building, with or without the porch, encroaches on the front setback. To do anything to do betterments on that side of the building is, puts Mr. Schwerer or any other owner of the property in front of this board. So, to the extent that there is a lacking of fair and substantial relationship between the general purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of the property, in this particular case, it's the pre-existing non-conforming nature of the structure proper, such that anything hung or appended to the front of it represents an encroachment of an encroachment through which we seek a variance here this evening. And then, the proposed use, we believe, is a reasonable one.
We only need the first section unless there's a question from the board. Then we don't need the second. Any questions from the board? No? Okay. Anybody would like to speak for? I'm sorry. Open a public hearing at this point?
Thank you.
Anybody want to speak for or against this petition? Close the public hearing? Anybody have any discussion items? Do I hear a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to grant Maddie Shurey, variance under section 2.02.13E4A of the zoning ordinance to permit an enclosed porch 10 feet from the front property line, whereas 30 feet is required. The parcel's located at 480 Daniel Webster Highway in the Town Center Overlay C1 Limited Commercial in Aquifer Conservation Districts, tax map 5D3, lot 46, case 2015-32.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Two, four, five, zero. Motion moves. You have 30 days. You have 30 days for someone to come back and appeal, otherwise, go forth.
Thank you very much, and we hope to see you on opening night. Thank you.
Look forward to it. Thank you.
Patrick had brought it up earlier, moving number six up to the first one, but all the petitioners weren't here. They are here now.
Should we probably confirm that?
Pardon me?
Okay.
Yeah, they are here now. Would the board mind moving number six up to the next item?
No, no problem. I motion that we move item number six up to the current?
To the next item number.
To the next item number, yeah.
Second that.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Five, zero, zero.
So, we'll now be hearing Sanford Survey Engineering petitioner, and Ralph and Gene Reed owners, variance under section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit a subdivision of one or two lots with less than the required minimum lots, 70,385 and 43,571 square feet, whereas 100,000 square feet is required, and frontage of 150 feet and 133.03 feet, whereas 250 feet is required. The parcel is located at 50 Wilson Hill Road in the R1 residential in Aquifer Conservation Districts, tax map 4B, lot 105, case number 2015-35. Will the Reeds be speaking this evening?
He might want to swear, but just in case.
If you both could stand real quick, just raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you very much. Please remember to sign in as well. Madam Chair?
Before we start, I'd like one of you to read the evidence to support your...
Madam Chairman, while they're setting up and getting ready, just to give a quick overview of this case to the board, there are four components to this particular variance. There are two frontage requirement variances and two lot size requirement variances associated with this application. This is similar to the, an application you heard last month. This is a lot that is in the R1 district by map. However, if it were applied, the soil standards, if it were not in the R1 district, they would not need to be here for the variance. But however, because this is in the R1 district by map, the R1 standards of 100,000 square feet of area, 250 feet of frontage, 300 feet of lot depth, all apply to this particular one.
Do you want us to take this as two separate votes on this?
You can do this as all as one, it's fine.
All right, thank you. Before you get started, and it's much easier for us, if you would read the variance questionnaire responses that were typed up, and then, and if you'd stop after each one if we have any questions, it makes it a little bit easier for you and us at the same time.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Earl Sanford of Sanford Survey and Engineering, here to present for the Reeds. With us here is Ralph and Gene Reed, the owners of the property. It's 50 Wilson Hill Road, I guess you have all the information, case number 2015-35, and I can jump into the factors. I would like to get one correction on what was published in saying that we were seeking for the reduction to be for 133 feet of frontage. That's missing a little leg, so in actuality, it's 158.38 feet is the, there's two frontages, 150 and 158.38, and not the 133.03 that was published. Understandable issue because there's a little part of a curve that needs to be added into the frontage on the map. So, the facts supporting Ralph and Gene Reed variance request for 50 Wilson Hill Road. Number one, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because, one, the variance would not alter the essential character of the locality. The lots either side of the subject parcel are one-acre lots, and more importantly, nine of the adjacent lots have frontages of 150 feet plus or minus. So, the addition of another single-family residence along the street on the subject parcel would be perfectly consistent with the neighborhood. And, two, granting the variance would not threaten public health, safety, or welfare. There's already a curb cut for the, it's a semicircle driveway, which will just be modified so that the curb cuts that are there will be used. There's good sightlines, there's ample suitable soil for septic and well, and the grades are well-suited for new residents with minimal land disturbance and no wetland disturbance. The spirit of the ordinance is preserved.
We're going to have to stop.
Oh, okay.
Any questions? No, go ahead.
Okay. The spirit of the ordinance is preserved because the density of homes for the neighborhood was established by development under the previous zoning restrictions of minimum area 40,000 square feet, minimum frontage 150 millennial feet, and minimum yard setbacks of 30 front, 20 side, and 60... of 30 front, 20 side, and 60 rear. The current proposal meets or exceeds those regulations which were enforced at the time the subject parcel was created. Also, abutting land at the rear of the lot is undevelopable, so the overall housing density will still be consistent with current regulations from a macro point of view.
Go ahead, Tony.
Why is the back of the property... You said it's not...
I believe it's the Boy Scout land, and there's some fingers of connecting water bodies that just make it unfeasible to develop. So it would be if... And I have a good diagram of the whole vicinity, I don't... The timing of that, I... With a question like that, I could show the graphic, but I don't want to rock the boat from what your usual procedure is.
Well, the procedure is to understand what you're trying to do.
If the Boy Scouts decide to develop their land, can they do it?
Not very well because of the wetland fingers.
But they can.
It would not be... It's not feasible to do so with the terrain and the geography that's there.
Not these days, but...
It's...
We've seen other properties that were never going to be developed, and now we're doing development on them because we're running out of land. So there's nothing preventing them from figuring out a way to do it. Is that correct? There's no easements in place, there's no conservation easements, there's no... Nothing like that that would prevent them from doing it. So it could be done.
There's the... The wetland overlay districts would have to get variances or get... They'd have to get relief, they'd have to be able to have stream crossings.
Okay.
And things that are... Unless you've got a... Again, from my own 40 years in the industry, it's not something that... You're absolutely right. With enough political power, you could make something happen.
It may not be feasible, but it could be done, yep, okay.
But it's, from a practical standpoint, I would say...
They did it across the street from where I live. They put in two developments in wetlands back in the late 70s, so even back then, they were doing it.
I did actually have a question. I noticed that you state here what the surrounding properties all have around 150-foot frontages. Do you have... I mean, is that something that you have in your visual?
Yes. And I understand, if I'm not close to the mic, I'm...
Take the portable mic there.
Right, so, I'm not trusting that tripod, which I pulled out of mothballs for tonight, but the green is the subject parcel. Do I need to go higher? So, here, this is Wilson Hill Road, running through here. This is the parcel that we're talking, we're dealing with. This would be the remainder, and that's the one we're asking relief to... The whole parcel, we're asking relief to subdivide it, so that it's very similar to these pink lots. All these pink lots, they're done under the previous zoning, so they've got the 150... Or actually, most, probably everything was, but those are... They're enjoying that very much smaller size. That was what was required in the previous zoning, that little green rectangle, the one with the pink is what's required now. So, all these pink lots are substandard, and that's why we're saying we're in the midst of a lot of lots that we would be similar to when we... In developing this, we would be developing it under standards that are actually more stringent than the standards back then, but... And because we're going from a side setback of 20 feet to 30 feet.
Just for purposes of clarification, the ordinance that established the R1 district by map was adopted by town meeting in the year 2000, so anything prior to the year 2000 was subject to the R residential standards, which was based on lot sizes... Or, excuse me, soil types for the lot sizing.
Right. So when my clients bought this property, it would have been an easy subdivision. We wouldn't have had to been here if at the point they made that their home, if they... And that, for all intents and purposes, had the potential of being further subdivided, especially the way the house was kept to one side. So as far as statistically, I counted up about 69 lots along the road that are showing on this map. Thirty-eight of them are non-compliant, so it's well over... It's over 50% of the lots along this road, and that's why you're seeing so much pink. So that's speaking to the... This would not be an odd man out in terms of fitting in with the neighborhood. Any further questions, so I go ahead and put that...
Where's that little hook you said? That little hook, you said that it's not 133, it's now 158. Where is that?
Oh, it's in the corner of this lot here, if you look on the diagram.
If you look at the subdivision plan, Tony?
Yeah.
The 133.03 is located to the left of the driveway, and underneath where it says Wilson Hill Road, is actually another curve that has a length of 25.35 feet to the left of that. So you add those two together, and that's how you get the 158.38.
And we do have the 158 shown on the plan.
It was just an error in the putting together of the agenda when it was put together by the office. They saw the 133.03, and that's what was run with the ordinance, with the notice.
Thank you.
All right, you all set, Tony?
Yes, I am, thank you.
All right, if you'd go on with the next one, please.
Okay, I think we're at three. I should be checking these off as I go. Did we do... We did two? Yeah, okay, thank you. And I don't need this, but if it's all right, I'll just leave it here for now. Number three, granting the variance would do substantial justice because the subject parcel was created with the potential for an additional future home site in the lawn field next to the owner's current home, which was built before the zoning changed. The potential for further development provided a "nest egg" for the owners upon retirement. They had no way of foreseeing that the zoning would change to substantially prevent further development. Granting this variance would allow the applicant to preserve the value of the land that was there when the lot was created in 1979 as a remainder parcel. And again, I don't see no harm to the public or neighbors if granted, but significant harm to the owner if denied in terms of value. But that's just an add-on to what's...
All right, any questions, comments? All right, go ahead.
The values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished for the following reasons. The lot will be consistent with the two closest adjacent abutters and with the neighborhood in general. Market forces indicate that new home construction would be consistent or better than the existing surrounding real estate and would not adversely affect the surrounding property values. And we did get a look at it by a Realtor, David Moran. Is that something I can give for the record, or no?
Any questions, comments? Number five?
Literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship owing to the special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. Denial of this variance would result in unnecessary hardship because, one, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property because the ordinance is postured to dictate the density of housing within a neighborhood. In this case, the density of the neighborhood had already been dictated by development under the previous zoning criteria. Denial would needlessly negate the added value of this parcel that was in play when it was created.
And I guess I would still harp on no harm to the public or neighbors if granted, but significant harm to the owner if denied, and there's no benefit to the public if denied. The proposal use... Proposed use is a reasonable one because it will allow the homeowner to develop his land in a manner that was consistent with the neighborhood and is consistent with the rules that were in play when the lot was created.
All right, questions, comments? Rich?
I was just gonna say, I think that's... I think it's a good explanation of unnecessary hardship, so...
I think we've established the above at this point, so we don't have to go any further on these. All right, any questions at all from the board? Questions, comments? If not, I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there any...
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I had a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you.
Why the subdivision? I'm sorry, maybe I missed that. I mean, is there a proposed build coming, or...
Yes. Yes, this is step one. The next step is to go to the planning board, and we'll have full, at that point, the test bit. We've got to pass the state subdivision rules, which the lot is well above the minimum for the state for being a valid lot. So from a septic standpoint, that's not an issue. I actually did some probes today, and it's excellent soil out there. So, step one is to get the variance because we can't meet the current zoning, and our hope is that we could get it close to what the zoning was when they purchased the property.
So they just want to build a second house? Okay, that's... I kind of figured it was case...
And kind of the nest egg thing, whether they build it or someone else.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask you, is it... Are they selling off the lot to build another private house, or is it going to be a family?
We're looking for the value to be there for their retirement, and that's the...
All right, that's fine. That's all I need. All right, if there's no further comments or questions, I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this variance? Is there anyone who would like to speak against it? All right, if you... They could sit here in these two seats here, and if anyone wants to speak, come and sit at the desk and sign in, please, and state your name.
So, I'm gonna read in of petition... I still... Mr. Hurley, if you could sign in, please, I'd appreciate it. But I am going to read on behalf of Mr. Joseph Hurley of 49 Wilson Hill Road. He's speaking against this. I'm not gonna enter this into record. "To the zoning board of adjustments, there are situations when a variance is required and justified. However, in regards to case number 2015-35, there are several reasons why a variance should be denied. 50 Wilson Hill Road is in an Aqua Fire Conservation area. The houses in this neighborhood are on wells and have septic systems. The 2.25 acre minimum lot size requirement is to help protect the groundwater contamination. When Brad Knight built the Harrington Drive development next to me, the lot that abuts my property was originally designed to be two acres. Brad was unable to get a variance for this and subsequently was forced to buy a .25 acre from the previous owner of my... The previous owner of my lot in order to meet the minimum lot size requirements. The 2.6 acres, the 50 Wilson Hill, is already one of the smallest lots on the entire road and barely a conforming lot by itself. If this variance is granted, it would create not one, but two non-conforming lots, making them by far the smallest in the neighborhood, in addition to not having even close enough square footage to build on, approximately half requirement. They don't have enough road frontage either, approximately half requirement. We also don't want to set a precedent for future development. The people selling this lot are leaving town, so any negative impact as a result of this variance has no effect on them, and the people buying the property are investors and may not have in the best interests of the neighborhood in mind. In addition to diminishing the aesthetics of the neighborhood, this would also have a negative impact on property values. Thank you for your consideration. Joseph P. Hurley, 49 Wilson Hill Road."
All right, is there anyone else who would like to speak, please?
David Elliott, he lives at 54 Wilson Hill Road. First, I'd like to...
Make sure you sign in, please.
Absolutely. I just signed in, so we're all set.
Is your mic on?
It should be a bright, bright green light.
Yep. Sorry about that. A little bit used... Not used to this microphone stuff. First and foremost, I'd like to second what my neighbor said, everything he wrote in that letter. Absolutely agree with it. Also, what I'd kind of like to continue with, too, is, you know, when I bought the house that I bought, I didn't buy it because of the house, I bought it because of the land. Houses can be fixed, they can be upgraded, they can be repaired. What you really can't change is the land. I do not believe, when I was stated that, you know, this kind of fits in with the design of the neighborhood. I actually disagree. There are some houses within the neighborhood that are closer, but because of the way the wood line is and the separation that that wood line provides, every lot within, to include my house in particular, you know, you're sitting on your backyard, you feel like you're in the middle of the woods. That's kind of the design of the neighborhood. There are very few houses, if any, that are built right on top of each other. This... Another house being built in that location would be built right on top of it. If you've ever seen that, actually gone out and seen the land, it's tight. It's very tight. It's going to be built on top of two other houses. In regards to also, you know, it not fitting with the neighborhood, another house at that location would actually equal, I think it's five plots across the street from one frontage on the other side of the street.
That would be my lot.
His lot.
Five houses across, so I question the accuracy of the lot. Being that many non-conforming lots on that road, I don't believe it, after driving up and down that road for 20 years, that there are that many non-conforming lots.
Would you state your name, please?
Sorry, Joe Hurley.
Have you signed in?
Joe, stay close to the mic, please.
Now, I have a question. The drawing that he had, the plan that he had showing Wilson Hill Road, is there anything that you disagree with that on, where you say there's supposed to be five lots across from yours?
Well, there will be, based on my frontage and what's proposed across the street. There's four now, and then now this would make five.
Okay, then I misunderstood you. I thought you said there was five now.
No, if this was approved, it'd then be five. So the road frontage, and with all these non-conforming, our lot spans that distance of that many. I mean, there was a reason why they changed it in 2000 to make it less dense, there was, you know, sort of go back on that. Now, I'm not sure why it would be justified. It seems like other people would want to start doing the same thing.
Just for the board's record, the plan that Mr. Sanford showed, that showed all the lots highlighted in pink, was actually directly from the town's GIS. So that is town information, so the accuracy in terms of the number of lots that are deficient from frontage is accurate.
Well, I misunderstood him. I thought he meant they were there now, that's why I was questioning that. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak against this?
I'm sorry. Were you all...
Yes. Okay.
Tim, are there any other letters or anything that are against this? Okay, last call. Anyone else who'd like to speak for or against this?
I have a question, actually, for a gentleman representing Sanford Survey and Engineering. So, based on the lot sizing, are there going to be any needs for further variances for setback relief from the sides of the property?
No. No, we've... We put a slight bend in the line to accommodate the 30 feet. It jumped up from 20 to 30. If they kept it at 20, it would have been a perfect rectangular lot, but to get the 30, we needed to bend the line slightly. We are, you know, at the one acre mark, the gentleman we talked will be the same size as his lot when it's done, if it's allowed.
Okay, thank you.
You all set, Rich?
Yes, that answers my question, thank you.
Lynn, did you have something?
Yeah, Tim, I've heard of a disconnect between these two testimonies. If we create these two lots, are they con... If we create these two lots, are they consistent with the other quote-unquote "pink" lots on the street?
The variance would essentially allow this lot to be subdivided in the same manner as any lot along this section of road could have been subdivided prior to the year 2000. Basically, any lot that was created prior to the year 2000 when the R1 district by map was adopted would have been able to utilize the soil-based lot standards and lot sizes would have been generally about an acre in size and 150 feet of frontage.
I understand that about the difference, but I'm saying, are the other lots, those pink lots that Sanford identified, are they similar in size?
I did not look in terms of size, but in terms of frontage, yes.
All right, again, anyone who'd wish to testify for or against this variance, or any board member that has any questions or comments?
I could address kind of your curiosity in terms of frontage versus area. The...of the...if, at your indulgence...
Go ahead.
Of the 38 that are non-conforming, I believe 20 of them, 38 are...have frontage. 20 of those 38 are also area-constricted. So, there are several with a deep lot that have...that go back a long ways from the road that have the area to meet today's zoning, but they don't have. So, there's 20 that don't have area or frontage, and 38 that don't have the frontage.
Okay, thank you. All right, go ahead.
Again, telling us, so that all of those lots that are non-conforming, all were in place prior to 2000?
Yes. Unless there were variances granted, but I don't know. I did not research the entire neighborhood to see if there were any previous variances granted.
When we...when I first came into the office, I was told that a similar variance was granted in the not-too-distant past. Now, fortunately, I didn't research that, but that was along the same road.
There was a similar variance to the R1 standards that was granted by this board last month. But as I say to any applicant, variance cases do not set precedent, because each lot has its stand on its individual merits.
Right. But as to his question, were they all there?
You'll say? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. And does anyone want to make a motion?
Actually, I'm sorry. I know I'm doing this kind of out of order. Would it be possible to reopen the public hearing for one more question?
You're a board member.
Okay, we'll keep it closed, then. If I could just address the abutters that were up here earlier. If you could please come to the microphone. Is it Joe? Is it your letter that was read into the... I had a question about that. And my curiosity was, there was something that came up in the letter regarding investors purchasing the house. And so, what I'm just trying to clarify is, is it the dimensional requirements of the variance that is a concern to you? Or is it the future buyers of the property that are concerned to you?
It's just the integrity of the neighborhood. Now, we'll have what is gonna basically amount to a cluster development across the street from my four-and-a-quarter acre parcel. So, I'm now...I got a nice big spread, and now I'm looking at a house after house like I'm in downtown Nashua. And I don't think that's right. I mean, if we're gonna go back to the old standards, that we're gonna change the rules back to before 2000, then I could get four houses on my lot. You know, and it's all to get some money. Then why wouldn't I want to do the same thing?
I think, I mean, I'm kind of newest to the neighborhood. I moved in about four years ago. You know, I moved into that neighborhood, I was pretty much told that, based on the city ordinances, there wasn't gonna be another house built there. That factored into my decision to buy my house. I know it's one...my house is one of the smaller lots in the neighborhood. But if I could afford 10 acres, I'd have 10 acres, but I can't. But, you know, you move into a neighborhood for that type of neighborhood, you expect it. You know, that's why we chose that neighborhood, pretty much what I'm getting at.
I think we'd all like to have 10 acres.
Yeah.
They wouldn't allow Brad Knight to do it behind me. He tried to get a variance, and they denied him. And they made him buy that quarter acre, so it's not...
How long ago was that, by the way?
In 2000, they did that Harrington Drive development.
Oh, so it was 15 years ago.
Yeah, it was right after the law changed. So, I guess, I don't know, maybe time softens it up, and you can get one later. I don't know, but I just...I don't think it's right to do that.
Well, legislation's changing constantly. So, not to confuse things, but that literally could change at any time.
Right, but there's still that. It's the requirement, and we're talking much less. The size is real small. Like he said, if you saw the situation, it's not like these other lots that have wood line, and they go deep back all the way to the water. And then there's additional land that can't be developed because of the wetlands. So, you get this feeling that it's giant, but not in this area. This is gonna be really close together, just not suited for the neighborhood. The house is gonna have to be small, too, to meet the setbacks. It's 30 feet, so it's gonna be like one of these little tiny houses you see, you know? So, I just don't think it's the right thing for that neighborhood.
Yeah, and actually, I was taking a look at that.
The lady next to us has 10 acres, Mrs. Foss. And then further down, people have up to 30, 36 acres. So, these are the smaller lots, and they changed it for a reason, to maintain that larger field there. All the way right through to Amherst, even in the next town, they start to become farms down the road.
Okay, so, this is exclusively due to the sizing of the property in comparison to other properties around it?
Yes.
So, where the frontage is comparable to other properties... Because, and I guess I ask this because, you know, I understand where you're coming from, and you're talking about, you know, tree lines and, you know, what you see when you look at the properties. But that's not really...and I understand your point about the neighbor in 2000. Whenever there's a new legislation, you know, we have to really take into consideration. But I guess what I'm trying to understand is that we are going to be voting on the size and shape of the property, on basically breaking the variance that we're discussing, and the...or using the variance to break the ordinance. And the question, then, is, does this lot look like other lots? The trees, the nature, that's kind of subjective to our decision.
This is an open field, as opposed to places that are heavily wooded on both sides of them.
Oh, no, completely understood. That's just not one of the factors that we take into judgment.
It's the five criteria period.
Yeah, so, that was all. Thank you very much.
And it's true, it's not like they have one lot that's good, and they're trying to squeeze it a little to get a second lot in. Now, they're going for two non-conforming lots. It's not even...it's not even like a little stretch. It's a big stretch to do this. And it's not a hardship thing in the sense that they're gonna be there, and they need to have family move in or something like this. It's...they're out of town. The people that are gonna come in and build this house are investors, and they're just gonna flip it and sell it?
Well, anybody can flip any house and sell any day of the week. That's totally relevant.
Right.
Just so you know.
Yeah, we can't cause speculation.
Right.
What's here and now? What's placed in front of us? That's what we have to vote on.
Certainly, the look and feel of it and the size of it, I don't think is in keeping with the rest.
I know, when I was down there, I looked at it.
If I may, Madam Chairman, I know the... It was spoken about the buildable area on this proposed lot, scaling off of the draft subdivision plan that's here. There's approximately 200-foot-by, maybe 100-foot buildable area. So, there is significant building envelope within the proposed lot that could easily accommodate a single-family home.
Anything further? Any other board members? Tell you, this hasn't been easy.
Okay. I'm gonna make the motion to grant the variance to Sanford Survey and Engineering. And Ralph and Jean Reed, variance under Section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit a subdivision of one lot into two lots with less than the required minimum lot areas, 70,385 and 43,571 square feet, whereas 100,000 square feet is required. And frontage is 150 feet, and the new frontage, which is 158.38, whereas 250 feet is required. The parcel is located at 50 Wilson Hill Road in the R1 residential in Aquifer Conservation Districts, tax map 4B, Lot 105, Case 2015-35. And there is also with that a staff recommendation that the applicant shall obtain subdivision approval from the planning board before the proposed two-lot subdivision. Just so you're aware.
Do I hear a second? Okay, I'm going to second it for discussion. All right. All in favor, say aye. All in the negative? Say aye. 4-1-0.
You're not done. That's simply a failed motion. You now need a motion to deny with reasons. I will remind whoever makes the motion, you need to have a specific justification based on the criteria as to why it does not meet I make a motion to deny the Sanford Survey Engineering Incorporated petitioner, and Ralph and Jean Reed owners, variance under Section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit a subdivision of one lot into two lots with less than the required minimum lot areas, 70,385 and 4,571 square feet, whereas 100,000 square feet is required. And frontage is 150 and 158.38, whereas 250 is required. The parcel is located at 50 Wilson Hill Road in R1 residential in Aquifer Conservation Districts, tax map 4B, Lot 105, Case Number 2015-35, on the grounds that number two, Spirit of the Orient, is preserved based upon the new lot sizes and the...it just making a lot that's gonna be almost 60,000 square feet less than what is required, which is what...because if you're making a 40,000-square-foot lot, whereas 100,000 is required, you're looking at a lot size of about 35. So, I don't feel that the Spirit of the Orient is held in this. I also feel that the value of surrounding properties may be...will be diminished, because you are now talking about making a more of a cluster-type environment, whereas it is a, you know, based upon that, I feel that there would be a diminished value in the properties that are there, because it could result in further dividing of the property, set a precedent to further divide the properties and cause diminished value in other homes as you now cluster that environment. I would caution anyone who makes a motion not to use the word precedent, because variances do not set precedent.
Okay, and I withdraw that term. I also feel that...so, based upon the Spirit of the Orient, based upon number two and number four, that is my...that's my reasoning for denying this variance.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor of the motion in the negative, say aye. Aye. And anyone against? 4-1-0 in the negative.
Motion does not carry. The motion... No, the motion does carry.
It does carry.
To deny. For the applicants and the Reeds, there is a 30-day period from which you can request the board rehear this case, which would be the first step if you want to move forward to appeal the process.
No, we're gonna go on to the next one. The next item on the agenda is Peter Stoddard of S&amp;H Land Services LLC, petitioner, and MDR Rehab and Development LLC owner, requesting a variance under Section 3.05 of the zoning ordinance to permit a single-family home to be built nine feet from the front property line, whereas 30 feet is required, and nine feet from the side property, whereas 15 feet is required. The parcel is located on 1 Donald Road in the R residential district, tax map 6A-1, Lot 138, Case Number 2015-33. And would you state your names, please?
My name is Peter Stoddard from S&amp;H Land Services.
My name is Raymond McMahon, managing member of MDR Rehab and Development.
All right, and if you would start off with your... You've attached here the variance questionnaire. And if you would stop after every item. If we have any questions, we'll ask you right then and there.
Certainly. Just to...just open it up. So, we have an existing house on a very small 10,000-square-foot lot on Donald Road and Shore Drive. The proposal is to demolish and remove the house and rebuild another house approximately in the same location, approximately the same footprint. And I'll go through the variance questionnaires. Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest, because the proposed new house will replace the abandoned rundown house that currently exists on the property. The public will benefit from the proposed new house, as it will be an improvement to the neighborhood where the existing house is the blight on the neighborhood.
That's a good description.
Thank you.
Any questions? I thought the tree was almost growing through the house when I first looked at it.
I did include pictures.
All right, number two?
Number two, the Spirit of the Orient is observed because the majority of the surrounding neighborhood is comprised of structures that do not meet the setback requirements. The proposed new house will match the characteristics of the surrounding neighborhood. I did include in your packet a kind of an overview of the GIS to see how these small lots in the area are similar.
Any questions? No, go ahead.
And granting the variance would do substantial justice, because the size and configuration of the lot, which is similar to other lots in this neighborhood, there is just no other location on the lot where a house could be constructed that would meet the setback requirements. The proposed house would be setback on the lot, such that it will meet the characteristics of the neighborhood. Again, it matches this neighborhood, which is over by Babusik Lake.
No questions? Go ahead.
For the following reasons, the value of the surrounding properties will not be diminished. The proposed new house will be a great improvement on what currently exists, and it will conform, again, to the characteristics of the neighborhood. Thus, the value of the surrounding properties would not be diminished as a result of building a brand-new house on the lot.
May I go ahead?
And speaking to the unnecessary hardship clause, again, because of the size and configuration of the lot, there is no area where a house could be constructed to meet the required setbacks. The house that exists there now is not really something that could easily be rehabbed. It's got a very old foundation that's falling down.[1752.12] It's got a very old foundation that's falling down, it's got mold issues, it's started out probably as a camp type house and was added to over the years and poorly constructed. So granting the variance will benefit the public by replacing the abandoned rundown house with a brand new house, and there is no harm to the public, because the house will be setback, similar to other houses in the neighborhood.
Any questions? Comments? Rich? I see you studying.
I was just trying to figure out if the existing house is nonconforming.
Yes.
Okay, that's all. Because you have dual frontage, both Donald Road and Shore Drive are considered fronts, so you have a thirty foot setback from Shore Drive, a thirty foot setback from Donald Road, and then you'll have side setbacks from the other two, other three property lines. There are no rear setbacks, because it has two frontages. So if you go for Donald Road, you can see where the dimension is, is fifteen feet, double that, that's what the actual setback is. So you're talking about a buildable area with a fifteen foot setback on the other side of that, you'd have basically a bowling alley that you could build within. At all these lots out by the lake, it's, these lots were platted long, long before there was zoning in Merrimack.
I think it was built in forty-five.
Didn't say a lot of those were built in the early to mid forties up there by the lake. Okay, Tony, just.
Do you have a comment?
We just went through the points of law. Do you have any questions or comments?
So really, not that, so the nine foot versus thirty foot, what we're really looking at is nine foot versus fifteen foot today. So even if you tried to adhere, you couldn't build anything on that?
Correct.
Okay, so really the variance is to extend it four feet, five feet, six feet?
It's basically to allow any kind of reasonable building envelope, you're going to need variances on this lot. If you apply the setbacks, there is just such limited area on the lot that it would be difficult, if not impossible, to build anything that would comply to setbacks.
That makes sense.
You'll sit on that, Rich?
Oh, yeah.
Right. Nothing further from the board? Then I'll open the public hearing.
Hey, can I say one more thing? I would like to say that we do have letters in your packet from the majority of the abutting property owners.
I'll take care of that during the public hearing, yeah. So is there anyone who'd like to speak for or against this? Gentlemen, would you give up your seat, please?
I'm not. I do.
And would you sign in and state your name, please?
My name is Jeff Mulligan. I received a letter about this, so I'm apparently an affected resident.
You're an abutter, then?
Apparently, yep. I would like to reinforce what the two gentlemen here said, don't know them, have never met them, very familiar with the house and the lot, I drive by it every day. It will be extremely in the public interest to grant what these gentlemen need to replace the rundown, dangerous, uninhabitable structure that's there, and replace it with a reasonable home in the neighborhood, so I a hundred percent support what they're doing.
Thank you very much.
In the packet you also have two letters, one from Peter Flood and another from, I think.
I can't read them.
Michael Martinez.
Do you want me to read those into the minutes?
You can either read them into the minutes, or you can incorporate them by reference that they are located within the file.
You're gonna have to help me out on that type one, I'll tell you.
Well, they're already, they're already in.
You already have the names?
They're already in the file, they were submitted prior with the application, so they've been in the file since day one.
What did you say the name was on?
I will double.
I will double check the assessing record, but I can't tell if it's Michael or Mark, I'm not sure.
The very first type.
Five Shore Drive.
No. No, this one right here. Hey, Patrick has one that I don't have. Paula Chaffey. This is six, Six Donald Road.
Excuse me. You have the same letters we have?
Yes.
Do you know who they are?
I don't have that either.
He's at number five, Shore Drive. Not sure what his, he signed his name, but I can't.
That one probably would, if that's on file, then that one would need to be read into file.
I didn't get, I don't have the other one.
I have that one, but not the other.
The actual file, I only have the one that we can't read, the name. The other one, I do not have, the one from six.
I'll pass down the other ones for you. All right, since there are no further questions from the board, I'm going to open the public hearing, and we've already had one person, so anyone for or against that would still like to testify? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and I have three letters here that are in favor of the House. One is from Peter Flood.
That one you can incorporate, because we've had that one in the file.
Okay, I don't have an address on him, and. Michael. Could be Martinez.
That's the best I could come up with.
Five Shore Drive. And this one here, no one seems to have. This is, Dear Board Members, as owners of the properties adjacent to 1 Donald Road in Merrimack, New Hampshire, and abutters to the proposed new construction, excuse me, we are writing this letter to inform you that we do not, do not have any objections with the proposed new construction being presented to you by MDR Rehab and Development and their agent. We hope that the board will support the application and grant the variance they are requesting, and this is Paula Chaffey of Six Donald Road.
Finley was kind enough to pull up the assessing record for me here. It's Michael Martines, M-A-R-T-I-N-E-S.
Thank you, Finley.
And if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to take that letter from the six Shore Drive to add to the file.
You got all of them.
I have that one and Peter.
See, the public hearing is now closed. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve Peter Stoddard of SNH Land Variance LLC petitioner and MDR Rehab and Development LLC owner, variance under Section 3.05 of the zoning ordinance to permit a single family home to be built nine feet from the front property line, whereas thirty feet is required, and nine feet from the side property line, whereas fifteen feet is required. The parcel is located on 1 Donald Road in the R Residential District, Tax Map 6A-1, Lot 138, Case Number 2015-33, and no supporting staff. Do I have a second?
Win a second. Win a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone against? Five, zero, zero.
You wanna get rid of that tree?
A couple of them.
A big one running through the house.
Yeah.
I swear it's grown, it's grown right through those steps.
If we leave it, it would be in the house. If we left it, it would be in the house.
Well, there's a lot of vandalism and stuff up there, huh?
Good luck.
Yes, will you thirty days, Bill?
It'll be in their decision letter.
Okay, next item on the agenda is JWS Custom Decks petitioner and Steve and Pauline Damaris owners, requesting a variance under section 3.05 of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a garage twenty-seven point five feet from the rear property line, whereas forty feet is required. The parcel is located at 25 Amherst Road in the R Residential in Aquifer Conservation Districts, Tax Map 4C, Lot 175-1, and Case Number 2015-34. And would you state your name, please?
I'm Renee.
Hi, me?
I'm Renee from JWS.
All right, could you, is your mic light on? It's gonna be bright green.
It's green.
Is it bright, bright green now?
Pull it a little closer to you.
Okay, okay. Sorry.
Are you the only one that's gonna testify about this?
Yes.
Okay, and would you start with the five points of law that we typed up, and then we'll ask questions as we go along?
Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest, because the proposed new garage would be in keeping with the existing home. The public would benefit, because it is an improvement to the existing home and in keeping with the neighborhood.
Go ahead.
The spirit of the ordinance is observed, because the proposed new garage is in keeping with the neighborhood, as a garage is common to a home and surrounding neighbors.
You've got a very low voice.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll try to speak up.
Please, if you would. All right, go ahead.
Granting the variance would do substantial justice, because the configuration of the lot, there is not an area where the garage could be constructed as to meet with the setback requirements and conform to what is normal and common. The only reasonable area to construct a garage would be at the end of the driveway. This would be setback from the road near the house, as to meet with the characteristics of the neighborhood.
Any questions? And you're doing much better, thank you.
For the following reasons, the value of the surrounding properties will not be diminished. The proposed new garage would improve the overall look of the property and conform to the characteristics of the neighborhood. Therefore, the value of the surrounding properties would not be diminished as a result.
Questions, comments?
Owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship, because no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property. Because of the size and configuration of the lot, there is not an appropriate area where a garage could be constructed to meet the required setbacks. Granting the variance would benefit the public in that, to have a home with a garage is common, there is no harm to the public, as the garage, garage will appear to have built at the same time as the house. The garage will always, will also be setback from the road at the end of the driveway, similar to homes in the neighborhood.
Okay, any questions?
The proposed use is reasonable one, because the proposed garage will match the characteristics of the neighborhood and improve the appearance and function of the lot.
Yeah, looks like we're all set. So no questions or comments from anyone?
I actually do have a question.
Sure.
So the proposed garage.
Yes.
Is there a reason why it's being built in the location where it's nonconforming, when it looks like there may be space on the other side of the house where you wouldn't need a variance?
It's really because of the configuration of the house, because it would look funny, because the, there's two entrances to the house, one is to the left and one is in the front, so if the garage was on the other side, you would have to remove a portion of the deck, or kind of configure the garage to that side a little differently. But there's no entrance, like, sort of to the house, so you'd have to, you'd have to walk to the front of the house to get to it. And then you would have to put another driveway in on the other side, so I think it would
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Kind of make more than is needed, because right now, you can just kind of curve the driveway as you get up. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, because your driveway, it's near, okay, yeah, that makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
You all set, Rich? Are you all set?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. No further questions? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing, and is there anyone who'd like to testify for this variance? Anyone who'd like to testify against it? Close the public hearing? Motion, please?
Madam Chairman. After I turn my microphone on. Madam Chairman, I move that we allow a variance under Section 3.05 of the zoning ordinance to permit construction of a garage twenty-seven point five feet from the rear property line, whereas forty feet is required. Parcel is located on 25 Amherst Road in the Residential in Aquifer Conservation Districts, Tax Map 4C, Lot 175-1, Case 2015-34, and I believe there's no notes from the second.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Five, zero, zero. We're all set.
Excellent, thank you.
Just remember, you got thirty days, somebody might say, hey, I don't want that garage there. And we can still, you can build.
Yeah, they might want it on the other side of the house.
I did understand the question, though.
Okay. Yeah, sorry, I wasn't trying to give you a hard time on that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, I have a couple of board members who have requested a five minute recess, so we'll reconvene at eight-thirty.
Thank you.
This point. And the next item on the agenda is Michael Alaconis, petitioner owner, requesting a variance under Section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit a shed approximately five feet from the side property line, whereas twenty feet is required. The parcel is located at 6 Mulliken Road in the R1 Residential in Aquifer Conservation Districts, Tax Map 5B, Lot 215-02, Case Number 2015-36. And would you sign in and state your names, please?
Just for the board's information before this moves forward, in Jillian's memo, you note that she mentions that this is another one of those lots that was rezoned from R to R1 by zoning map in the year 2000, so the setbacks per the current zoning are actually fifty foot front, thirty foot side, and sixty foot rear. So the variance request is actually for a five foot setback, whereas thirty feet is required, based on the current zoning of the property. The plot plan that was put together by the applicant's surveyor was based on the previous zoning for the lot.
So this is similar to the second one we did?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
So what you're saying is the surveyor.
The surveyor, the plan that has been submitted was based on the previous zoning. The actual correct zoning is R1 with fifty, thirty, and sixty for setbacks.
All right. All right, would you start off with the points of law that you filled out, please? And if you'd stop after everyone, I think you've heard me say it enough.
Yeah.
Your names, please?
Michael Alaconis.
Aaron Alaconis.
All right, go ahead.
Granting the variance would not be contrary to public interest. The shed is a well-built, attractive structure, setback from the road to eliminate any obtrusiveness. It is located in a corner space on my property that is enclosed by trees.
Any questions?
Yes.
Go ahead, number two?
The shed is set at an angle of the property line, which has a slight buffer of trees.
All right, go ahead.
Granting the variance would do substantial justice, because at this time, the shed is built. In this location, I have access to the shed during all four seasons. Other locations on the property are not accessible, because I would have to drive over the septic system, the leach field, I would have to potentially drive over other neighbors' property if I set it to the other side. I would have to potentially drive over other neighbors' property if I set it to the other side of the house. And as well as the current location of the well. Any other location on the property, the shed would be completely exposed due to the openness of the land and would infringe on other setbacks.
Questions? Go ahead.
For the following reasons, the values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished. Currently, the shed is set in an unutilized area within the trees. The shed is meticulously constructed with a thoughtful color scheme chosen to blend in with the surrounding natural landscape. It does not inhibit the views of the land. The only views obstructed are the view into our backyard and family room. Moving the shed will not change any views and will not increase or decrease property values.
Questions, comments? It is a good-looking shed. It's big.
Thank you.
And, next one, unnecessary hardship?
No fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property. Because if variance was not granted, I would be required to move the shed, which would be virtually impossible due to the layout of the property and the extreme steepness of the slope of the land. This would cause significant financial burden on a young married couple with one son and a newborn on the way. I believed this location would be the best place for the structure to decrease visibility while still having accessibility. The floor deck had been in place since November 2014. Our neighbor had seen the placement and had asked why it was not on the other side of the house. I explained that I could not put it on any other section of the yard because of the location of the septic system and the lack of accessibility in winter months. No further comments were made regarding the location of the shed. Until the spring of 2015, the same neighbor asked when the shed would be built, so they no longer had to look at the tools and equipment on our side yard. It was not until the shed was completely built that the neighbor hired a surveyor. This is when I became aware of how deep the shed was into the setbacks.
Okay, I think You wanted to read the number two part? Number, go ahead with the second part of it.
The proposed use is a reasonable one because the placement of the shed is in the least obtrusive location on our property. It is placed on an unused section of our land that does not interfere with adjacent property values, views, and/or aesthetics.
Rich, do you have a question?
Hey, Kennedy, so I'm just trying to put this together in my head, so When did you break ground on the shed?
November 2014.
Okay. Okay, all right, I see. So July 2015 is when we were notified that the shed was too close to the side property. So when you got a building permit, were you not aware of the property lines?
No. I mean, you can sorta, we, when they hired the surveyor, they had to figure out where the, our granite bound was in the front corner, where it was buried. So when they found it, it was, what, a month ago or something like that? That's when we, even, there's trees there at an angle, so you, we sort of had an understanding of where the property line is, but not exactly where it was. And it was a little bit different than what I thought it was. And when I originally got the building permit, I talked to Fred Kelly and he said, just, you know, basically pull a tape measure over from the garage based on the plot plan. That was, I guess, originally submitted in '87 or whatever. And he said, pull from two spots and, you know, you'll figure out where the line is. And then, it was 20 feet. I had no idea about the 30-foot, the change in the zoning or whatever, from 20-foot side setback, when it changed to 30-foot. I had no idea about that until just recently.
That was the, that was the change that took place in 2000, so
The building department went, they did not further investigate beyond the plan that was submitted, which was based on the 1980-whatever plan that was still showing the 20-foot setbacks. They erroneously granted the permit, understanding the setback was 20 feet, what it is actually, 30.
Okay, so they were given a permit without actually validating this?
The permit, from what I understand, was for the shed to be setback 20 feet, which the building department believed to be in conformance. My department was not notified, so we didn't actually have any knowledge of this until the complaint came in.
Okay, so when you built this, you were in the understanding that you were, that you had, you were under the impression that you needed a 20-foot setback?
Yes.
Okay.
So the location of the shed is none of the owners doing?
Well, it's, it still, it would still would have been, it still would have only been five feet from the property line. It would have been 15 feet closer than what it should have been based on the permit.
Because of the surveying and everything else, it was
The surveyor properly located the line that was hired by the abutter to determine where that line was.
So is the surveyor accurate? Okay.
Yes.
It's stamped and his license is on the line when he stamps a survey like that, so.
Okay, so then, we're still looking at something that was built five feet from a setback where 20 feet was required per the original instructions. 30 feet today. And we're still, we're still 15 feet over. Okay, I was just, I'm trying to, trying to do the math, thank you.
But the shed is completely on your property.
Yes.
It's five feet from the property line where it should have been set further back.
My worry was, it's completely on your property. It's not on your neighbor's property. That's the part that I want to just make sure. And you have another shed as you're looking at the house on the left-hand side, don't you?
It's the pool house.
Oh, okay.
And that was, that was there.
We were sitting in front of your house, nobody came out to say, get off my property, so.
It must have been during the day.
Yeah, oh, yeah. You can go up that many times. Don't listen to him. All right, are there any further questions from the board? You've got it all straightened out, Rich? Patrick? Tony? Lynn?
Is there any reason why you can't move it 15 feet closer to, away from the property line?
I could do it. I would have to get a crane and get some steel beams and figure out a way to rig it and then get some new, you know, put some new sonotubes. But just the way that the land slopes down, it slopes down
I know there's a steep slope back there.
Yeah, and where I had it set, it's even from the back post up, it's nine feet from the ground to the floor. So if I came over
So to, so to
So to get back into the, never mind the 20 feet, 25 feet, but to get back into the 15-foot, move it that way, you'd be back into that steep slope?
Very deep into it.
How big is that shed?
18 by 30.
The size of my house.
Basically, I was, my scaffolding and planks and my pump jacks and stuff, that was my original thought, was to keep all that equipment and stuff out of, you know, the weather, especially in the winter and whatnot, and just be able to, you know, tuck that in there. And then, and, you know, my garage is very, very full of tools and stuff like that. And I, I'm required every winter to make sure that the missus has a parking spot in the garage. And things just start
Every husband should make sure of that. My car stays out in the summer because the boats are in the garage.
And I would like to say that there is a, now, it makes it even more challenging. Oh, did I
No, you didn't, you weren't sworn in yet?
I guess not.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I swear. There's now a very large fence that has been put in place. So that will definitely make it more challenging getting steel beams and things like that under the shed and getting a crane in there.
The fence is, well, it's five feet, five feet away. We noticed how new that fence was that They, it's a solid fence.
Mm-hmm.
It's a big old fence.
All right.
Go ahead.
I just was, I guess I'm kind of reiterating Rich's point. When you did the measurements, you, I mean, you put it 15, you put it, I mean, based on the measurements, based on the original, unless I'm missing something, you put it there knowing that it was not within conforming?
I had no idea I was that close. I thought I was between 10 and 15 away from the property line. And it turned out I was
So that's, that's a little bit different than what I
That's what I thought you, because that's what I thought you were gonna, is because they told you where you had to be. And there, and there's no property markers or anything, there was no, I mean, I, I mean, this is what it is. It was built, but it just sounds like, I mean, you kind of built it a little bit over where maybe more than it should have been. And I understand you have, you have lots a little difficult to build on, but, and you weren't, maybe you weren't aware of property lines, but they laid out how far. I'm just, I, that's what I was, thought you were trying to get around as well. I mean, it seems like you kind of built it, I don't know. I see where the well is
I pushed
On there as well, but it seems like you might have pushed it over a little bit further than you actually really probably should, look, though, than you, than you could have. But, so there's an existing well there, so you can't put it over that. And moving it over behind the well, it would require you to drive over that, and so that would be an issue, correct? Because right now, you're gonna drive over your grass anyway to get to it.
Yes.
I, I'm just confused by something that just came up, so, I'm sorry. You knew that you had 20 feet, but you just said you figured it was around 10 feet, even though you knew it was 20 feet that it should have been?
I knew I was, I was going a little bit into the setback.
So you were told what the setback was, and you were told 20 feet, and you still erected it within the setback?
Yes. But the basic, my rationale was, was the view from the road and for the neighbors. So that it would somehow, so that there's a couple pine trees, three very large pine trees, and the way the lot goes off at an angle and the shed is at an angle. I would figure, I figured that the neighbors would have less of a problem with it if it was more hidden than more in the open. So that, that was my rationale, was, yeah, I know what the, what the setback was. I was gonna come into it, what I thought was a few feet. And, but at the same time, I was thinking about the actual overall look from the neighbors' perspective, all the neighbors, as they're driving down the road. And their view, because my house, when you're driving down the road, is right there. So instead of having the shed right there next to it, I figured if I tucked it over just a little bit with these pine trees right here, that it would just look better. And I was probably wrong. But
Now, how does the slope come to play in this? Can you move it at all with that slope?
It would take some fancy, I would have, anything's possible.
I'm aware of that lot, and, and I know that where the house is, right behind the house, it drops off dramatically. I'm not talking just a gradual slope down, it really is a very large drop.
I could see some of that from the pictures when we were there.
Yeah, I just, I know the lot, so it's, I know there's a, there's a huge drop there.
I think, and don't quote me on this, but I think it's 30, if you go 30 feet, it goes 50 feet down. So it's a really steep, steep slope. No, there's no backyard.
It's not a slope, that's a drop-off.
It is a drop-off.
She wanted me to put a fence back there for our son. So
Okay, any further from the board?
I do understand lot lines and how they can be misconstrued. We had one that we thought our back lot went, line was in a certain place, just because of the lay of the land and how the trees and the landscaping was done. And when they built behind us, we discovered it was very, pretty significantly different than what we thought. So I can understand that. I do have a problem with you saying you intentionally went into what you thought was, and I think it was with good intentions to try and make it more aesthetically acceptable to everybody. So the intentions were good. And I can understand where the Yep, yep. But I also don't see this a good way of moving it.
Unfortunately, that's not the, that's not the topic.
Okay, since there's nothing further from the board, Tony?
No.
I'm gonna open the public hearing. Is there anyone here who'd like to testify for this variance? Anyone who'd like to testify against it? All right, you've been sworn in?
I have.
Okay. No, no, just state your name and, right? And sign in.
So my name is Denise Levek, and my husband is with me, Robert O'Grady, and we are the abutting neighbors at 5 Mulliken Road directly next to the Alaconises.
Okay, you're the one with the fence, just to make it clear.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So in response to the application, I just go line, the, section by section. The shed is contrary to public and private interest and adversely affects all neighbors. The shed is not enclosed by trees and is obtrusive and clearly visible to all Mulliken Road properties. The structure was built entirely in the side setback. It should be noted, Mulliken Road, as identified by Dan Simmons in the R1 zoning district, as you mentioned earlier, is actually a 30-foot side setback requirement. The building permit specified a 16 by 26 shed with a 20-foot side back, side setback. The constructed structure is actually 18 by 30 and is approximately five feet from our property line. The structure is not built according to the building permit. No other structure of this type exists on any other Mulliken Road property. The spirit of the ordinance, that item, the spirit of the ordinance is not observed. A variance would give 6 Mulliken an unfair building precedence and advantage over all other properties in the neighborhood. The structure severely infringes on the side setback rights of 5 Mulliken Road. Grant, number three. There are no unique or unjust characteristics of 6 Mulliken that support granting a variance for the structure and the side setback. 5 and 6 Mulliken Road share a similar topography with wells, septic, and the drastic slope that you've seen. It is unreasonable to allow a large structure in the side setback when the property already includes an in-ground swimming pool and existing 10 by 12 shed or, I guess, pool house. Additionally, it also has a large cement pad, which they currently use as camper storage. It appears that they've used all usable storage. It appears that they've used all usable land on their property. Number four, the structure's size and location are not consistent with the building permit. The structure is two feet wider and six feet longer than the permit, than permitted and built entirely in the side setback. A substantial portion of the view from Five Mullican, my home, now directly faces the structure and, based on its encroaching size and proximity, has a definite negative effect on property values. Additionally, Mr. Alaconis frequently parks his truck and construction trailer in front of the structure's garage door, essentially creating a new parking area. Again, that is in the side setback, no more than five feet from our property line. Number five, section one, the Alaconis property is similar to other properties in the, to other properties in the area and cannot reasonably claim an unnecessary hardship. It was Mr. Alaconis's decision to build in a non-permitted area and not according to the building permit. Mr. Alaconis never discussed his building plan with us prior to construction. He conceded in June, which I have a Facebook message from, that's June of 2015, that the building was not being built according to permit. At that time, we felt it was necessary in our best interests to have property lines surveyed. If there was any question in Mr. Alaconis's mind that there was an issue with the structure, structure's location, he should have ceased construction and submitted a variance request before you folks. In response to his comment, he, the comments are such that it was our responsibility to obtain a survey. The responsibility is upon the petitioner to obtain the proper permits, build accordingly, and properly observe zoning requirements. Mr. Alaconis works in the construction business. He has a degree in civil engineering and has prior professional experience as a land surveyor. We assumed that he understood all aspects of construction, including zoning and building codes. And section five point two, the proposed use is unreasonable because what Mr. Alaconis considers an unused area is a protected side setback where a structure of this size is not permitted. There are other viable options available to Mr. Alaconis that do not infringe on Five Mullican property rights or require a variance. The close proximity of the structure does interfere and infringe on Five Mullican's setback rights, views, values, and aesthetics. I could address the fence, but it's not, it's not part and parcel to this.
I just want to identify your property.
Yeah.
As chairman, I'm gonna ask to see the Facebook posting that you have there, please. No, I just want the Facebook.
May I make one other comment?
Can you read that into?
Give me a moment here.
Byamis.
Pardon?
What was the other comment?
So I actually have photos here that are dated. Mr. Alaconis, I have pictures of his stake that he put in the ground.
We actually have that picture as well.
Okay. This photo shows the property line staked by Mr. Alaconis, taken on seven-ten. This is actually the photo taken after the surveyors came, and he's within like four inches of that stake. So he very well knew where the property line just about was.
Are we accepting new testimony, new documents? This one? The reason I requested to read this Facebook posting is because I do feel that it is pertinent to this case, and it's from Mike Alaconis. It says, "Hi Denise, is there any way you, Rob, and I could sit down and talk about the shed I'm building? I'm concerned that it is creating a rift between us. My goal is to bring us closer by being able to clean up all the junk tools that were scattered throughout the side yard. The last thing I wanted was to create problems. I lucked out as far, as far over as I could, I tucked it as far over as I could so that it would be somewhat hidden behind those pine trees, and now I have questions as to whether I may have went too far. I would like to hire the surveyor to make sure the shed isn't on your property. There's no reason you should have to pay for that. And if for some reason the shed is on your property, I will rectify the situation. I want to get along with you guys, and I certainly understand your concern and apologize for any stress that I have caused. I promise you that my intention was the opposite." You knew what you were doing. That's, that's what's getting to me right now. You knew exactly what you were doing.
Actually, I think we should, although you have read this, Mr. Alaconis, is this indeed your post?
Yes.
Okay.
That was to give us a timeframe.
If you could please go to the microphone.
So the deck, the sonotubes and the whole floor of the deck was, was put in, what, eight months before there was any problems. It went all the way through winter, and that was what I was, that was the footprint of the shed itself. There was never an issue until, well, I got a phone call from the surveyor that I used to work for when I was in college, and he said, "Oh, your neighbors just called me and they're unhappy with the shed." And I was, you know, this is when I was, I was actually roofing the shed. So it wasn't until way, way, way after that there was any issue. And then, so that stake I put in was in either June or July, something like that. That wasn't a stake that had been there since November. So that footprint was there, already there in November. I had second-guessed myself, went back down to the building, the office, in the firehouse, got the, got the plan again. And the reason I even sent that Facebook message was because I had gone on to the Merrimack GIS website, and that showed that the property line was like significantly farther over towards my driveway. I mean, it showed that the shed was like half and half, half on their property and half on mine. And I believe Rob saw the same thing, and that's when he got a, you know, was concerned that the shed was on his property, and then I was concerned too. So, because the GIS is usually pretty close, but it wasn't even close in this, in this circumstance.
Okay, so at the time that you, you sent that Facebook message, how far into the building were you?
At that point, I had the roof on.
Okay, so you questioned it after you completely assembled it?
Yes. Because all I did was pull over with the tape measure. And I sort of eyeballed it, and it was, it was basically along those pine trees. That's where I had assumed that's where the electric boxes are. They usually put those on the property line. I mean, I didn't know exactly the angle based, you know, from the boxes. I assumed the boxes were relatively close, but I didn't, all I did was pull off of the garage, and it wasn't, it's not, it wasn't a ninety-degree angle with the house. It was pull off at a skew. So any variance within the tape measure at that skew, you know, it can go this way or this way significantly. So it wasn't until we got, until the surveyors put their marks up that it sort of, you know, reiterated that I wasn't on their property, which was my main fear at that time.
Now, you pulled a permit for the shed, correct?
Yes.
What were the dimensions on the shed when you pulled the permit?
Twenty-six by sixteen. And basically, the reason that it got expanded was because when I was putting in the sonotubes, the hill drops off. So I didn't have the equipment, essentially, to make sure everything was perfectly lined up. So I had to get the base, and then I had to cantilever over the actual tubes to make sure it was square. Obviously, you know, I wasn't, I was, I was a little bit more drastic than that, but, but that's the reason that I eventually made it a little bit bigger than what I proposed on the, on the building permit.
Did you go back to the building department and change the dimensions on the shed?
No. We were, we were, I should have, we were involved in this neighborly dispute thing, and I just, I don't know, at the, at the, at the time, I don't know.
The one word that you've used that... I must say, I don't like is the word "you assumed." You didn't double-check anything, you just assumed. And I have a problem with that. I really do.
I just, I honestly believe that the severity of, of the, the fact that it was a shed, you know, I just didn't put it in, in the highest level of, of importance as far as, but...
I'm gonna leave it up to the board. Are there any further questions at this point? Oh, I'm sorry. Could you come up, sir, and state your name and sign in, please?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Bob McCave. I'm in Abutter. I live on Wilson Hill Road. I own property behind this, behind Mullican Circle. Heard a lot of testimony tonight. Very interesting. I'd be curious to see, who's seen the shed for the road? Any of the board members?
Oh, yeah. We've been there, yeah.
All there? You think it looks right? I mean, without emotion?
It, that's not...
That doesn't matter, anyway.
It's ordinances.
I heard a lot of testimony tonight. I went and got a copy of the building permit. Has anybody looked at that plan? Because the applicant put the position of the shed on that plan when he applied for the permit. I have a copy if the board wants to see it. Do you need Development to have it? Shall I pass it to you?
Does the board want to look at it?
Yes.
It really has some truth to it. The applicant shows the position of the shed, the rear yard, right yard area, just before the edge of the cliff that drops off in his backyard. There is a line of demarcation there where the, where the cliff starts to recede. Totally different position than where he put it, where he built it. It's too bad that the people at Five Mullican had invested a surveyor. That's a hardship of them. And it's, and it's again too, too bad. They put up a fence in trying to hide a shed, which sticks up in the air, is out of size, is as big as a large garage. And, and the two homeowners couldn't even come together and be honest with each other, especially the applicant. We all live in the neighborhood. We all should get along. But it seems like it's been overbuilt. He knew what he was doing. He admitted he knew what he was doing. He's in the building business. He knows the building can be moved. People move buildings all the time. They sight two beams under it. They put trailer wheels under it. They pull it out of where it's not supposed to be, and they put it back in a position which he had promised the town it would be in. It is possible. He built it within twelve feet of his wellhead. He's concerned about his water, water well, but he built a big shed near his wellhead. His septic system is totally opposite side of the yard. It's not an issue. It's too bad the applicant didn't cut down a couple pine trees and put it in the right placement. It looks really out of place where it is. And he still has the opportunity to correct what he did wrong. And this board has the power to do that, make things right. These poor people at Five Mullican have to live with that in their front window. It's not meant to be. Just an opinion from another Abutter. Utilized blending of natural landscape. He tucked it between trees, and then the, the neighbors built the fence around it, tried to hide it to little avail. I don't know. It, it looks really completely out of sight and displaced, and I wish this board would consider to do the right thing. The placement is on the original applicant's plan. It shows where the slope drops off. It could have been built there very easily. And the applicant knows he could take it apart and move it in pieces too if he has to. So, this is in Abutter. Sorry I have to be here, but you have the power to make it right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Thank you. Rich? What, Jim?
My only question is, and I'm sorry I have to ask this, but is this what you submitted? Okay, thank you. Yeah, if you could just...
Those, those two measurements off the garage is, is how I originally got the line. You know, it's a, I went at an arbitrary angle that I thought was it.
The only reason I ask is because, you know, if you were, if you were measuring the two closest points between the garage and the shed, and you were off on the angle, then it would be very hard to build something that happens to be so parallel. You know what I'm saying? It would be on an angle if you, if you had a distorted view of where the line was. The actual proposed shed would have, it wouldn't be exactly five feet on both sides of the shed. This is very clearly very parallel with the line. It's...
I think the difference is the shed on the proposed drawing was significantly further back in the property line than what is actually built. And that's where your dimensions from the garage to the shed come off. Because as you go back, you've got a lot more distance between the property line and the garage, so that if you come up a certain distance back there, you're all right, but here, you're right on the property line. That's where I see the difference. That's where I see the difference.
I, I see a stamp on this, but I don't see a date.
Yeah, right there.
Where is it?
Oh, I'm sorry. So, if you measure from here to here, back here, this would've been here, anywhere for the distance, but when you put it up that close, now you're... Make your call, that's the difference.
Are you done with public hearing?
I haven't closed the public hearing yet. All right, is there anything else from the board? Questions, comments? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry, Finley, go ahead. Have you been sworn in? All right, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so hope you got it?
Yes, I'm good.
All right.
My name's Finley Rothaus, who resides at 14 Kidridge Lane. Michael is my son-in-law, Erin's my daughter. I hadn't intended on speaking tonight, because I didn't think it completely appropriate. But I do believe that Mike's intentions were in fact, as he stated, to try and seclude this. Thinking it was a couple feet in was an unfortunate mistake on his part. But for Mr. McCabe, shame on him. I believe Mr. McCabe has been a thief and stolen from my son-in-law, the property of his. And I, I believe that to be true. So, I didn't expect anything different from him tonight than what you heard. As far as the neighbors, I feel badly for that, and you as a zoning board have to do what you have to do. But Michael's intentions were never to be of harm, as a matter of fact, that Facebook page, I think, speaks directly to that. He really was disappointed that it had turned out the way it did. So, just wanted to put that on the table, and I appreciate your efforts. And it's unfortunate that it got to this point today, but thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Finley. All right, now I will close the public hearing unless anyone else wants to speak. All right, the public hearing is closed. And may I have a motion, please? Would someone make a motion, please?
Rich?
I'll give you time to reread again.
Make a motion. I'll make a motion to deny Michael Lachlanus, petitioner-owner, variance under Section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit a shed approximately five feet from the side property line where his twenty feet is required. Parcel is located at 6 Mul- Mullican Road in R1 Residential and Aquafire Conservation Districts, tax map 5B Lot 215-02, case number 2015-36, on the grounds that, under Section 2 Spirit of the Ordinance, I do, based upon what was filed with the zoning, what was filed with the building office, is not in line with, I feel, what the spirit of the ord, what is written under the Spirit of the Ordinance, as well as under Section 5.2 Reasonable Use. The proposed use is a reasonable one because it's not an obstructive location it was. It was actually put on a side property where it shouldn't have been, given that the background of Mr. Lachlanus includes having done soil samples, and this is in the R1 Residential District. Should've been, that is, I find it hard that, was not aware, did not become aware of that at any time during the build. My personal opinion on that one, I guess. And then the sectional vault would be Section 4. Is that the shed was in, set in an unutilized area within the trees. And I won't deny shed, I, I, the shed, although the shed may have been put over to the side in what was thought to be an unutilized area, according to the property owners, as stated, it is their property, and it was built half on their property. Do I have a second?
Just a clarification, it was not built half on their property?
It was built, it was built within their, in, within their...
Within the setback.
Exactly, that's what I'm, yes, that's what, exactly. Apologies.
There is no encroachment, it is just an encroachment within the required setback.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, is there a second, please?
Second.
Tony is the second.
Just for my own clarification, Patrick, as I have to put together the decision notice on this. Is the primary basis for the three areas that you cited, that it was knowingly put within the setback, more so than the actual deviation itself?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Tony was the second.
Everyone, in favor of the denial of the variance, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All in favor, against, opposed of the, to the denial, say aye.
Aye.
Tony, you agree to the...
No, he agreed to, no.
He voted in favor.
In favor, four, one, zero. Frank, your variance has not been granted.
You guys do have the right to an appeal, just so you know. Thirty calendar days to request a rehearing with the board. Next item?
Discussion other action items, I do have one thing.
Oh, I do too, I do too. I'll let you, I'll let you go first.
In front of your seats tonight, you should've found the draft meeting schedule for 2016. You have checked and double-checked the hearing dates and the deadlines to avoid any holidays. We have tried to keep the meetings to the final Wednesday of each month. The reason for doing that, and it does, it's not always the fourth Wednesday, it's the last Wednesday. The reason we do that is to manage the conflicts between the planning board and the zoning board, so that we don't end up having weeks where I have double packets and double deadlines, which is a severe stress on my staff and I.
Double meetings, I appreciate that.
And I'm sure Lynn does as well. But what I'm looking for is a consensus or a motion from the board to adopt the, the schedule, so that I can post and distribute as appropriate.
I have no problem with it, anybody else?
I think consensus is fine.
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I don't have much consensus.
Is that quick enough, Tim?
That works, thank you.
I got a bone to pick with everybody. I realize that sometimes it's hard to come forward and say you want to deny a motion. I am not, I repeat, I am not going to be the bad sheriff on this, on this committee. Okay, I know that there are other people who, who felt certain ways about, and this is not the first time, but I seem to be the only person that is ever making the motion to deny. And miraculously, I'm not in the, in the minority when the vote comes, and I'm the one that has to come up with the reasoning as well. I, I, I'm not gonna have that, I know people were here for a reason. You, everybody hears the same testimony I do. I'm not gonna continue to be the bad sheriff here and make these motions. I, I, it just, this is not, you're putting it on me to make the motion, and then to put up the reasoning for it, and I'm getting nothing from the people. Now, if I was the only one that was putting up negative mo, the, the denials, and then everyone else was voting against me, okay, then that, that, that's on me. But it should not be on me to come up with the reasoning every single time I turn it down, because if you're voting in the positive, that you're turning down, denying an emotion, then you need to voice why you're doing it, and not put that on me.
I would certainly encourage that those, regardless of who makes a motion to deny, that before you make that motion, have a discussion beforehand, so that you can come to consensus as to the reasons, so that you're not trying to do it on the fly, like Patrick has had to do it a couple of times. Utilize your deliberation period, so that you can have a discussion among the board, so that it's a group effort to try to come up with these, because they need to be ironclad, they need to be solid, because we, if we get challenged in court, we need to be able to defend that.
I just want to say that I feel the exact identical same way that you do. And I'm going to just say that I wish to concur with every single word you said. So, that makes two of us.
Okay. I'm not, I'm not angry, don't get me wrong, I'm not angry.
Oh, no, no, I am, I am, don't get me wrong, I'm actually angry.
Okay.
You don't have to be, I am.
Okay.
And I'm working about sixty hours a week and considering leaving the board because of it, to be honest with you. So, I want to put that on the table.
Okay.
I, I kind of agree with, not I kind of agree, I do agree with, with Patrick. I'm afraid that I am not as fast in looking up the situation of why I would deny him the, the petition. That's on me. I've been on the board for a long time, I should get it right away, but I don't. So, I agree with Tim, believe it or not, that we should discuss this fully before anybody makes a decision on why we should deny somebody that's out there. Once we discuss it among ourselves, what, possibly why we should deny it, then the person who makes the decision of saying, "I deny this petition because," needs to be solid ground, and the rest of the board would understand it. And I agree that
Pat?
It was on the fly. He did ask me, but I didn't have enough time to look over which one I wanted to, to deny the petition. He, there was gonna be four, two, two or four. Does it make any difference which way you go on the, on the...
All it takes is one thing, if you meet, if you fail to meet any of the five criteria.
Right, but it doesn't make any difference which way, which one you choose.
It does not matter which ones you choose. If you feel there are multiple, I certainly recommend that you do multiple. Because if we go to court, and the court finds that any one of those reasons is valid, even if it finds the other reasons are invalid, as long as there is a single legitimate reason for denial, you're good.
So, I'm sorry, I apologize. That's okay, don't touch me. All right. I want to make it quite clear that this, you know, whatever it's worth, who believes me or don't believe me, to be honest, I really don't care. But I'm just gonna make it clear that it's not gonna happen again. That if something's gonna come up like this, I'm gonna, either I say it wrong or say it right, I'm gonna say it and go from there.
I agree with Tim, there should be deliberation period before either an approval or a disapproval. And we used to do that, we don't do it anymore. When the chairman, whoever it is, calls for a, a motion, and we all sit here in dead silence and stare at each other, it makes us look incompetent.
Yes, it does.
And I, and that's, that's, I'm just, I, I, that's not what I want this board to be.
I agree.
I agree with you wholeheartedly, and as being chairman, sometimes you're, you feel very funny sitting here. Okay, well, then I'm gonna start calling names, each one of you, to see if you're gonna make a motion.
I agree.
You know, we've, all of us have been here a while. So, we shouldn't say, we, we're veterans, we might say. And we should be a little answering the questions, or saying the reason why this is going down right away. So, I don't think, I'm not trying to make an excuse for myself, I'm just saying that I was, what's the word? Not a, well, maybe afraid that I would make the wrong statement. So, this way, as I said before, you keep on saying, "If we go to court, we go to court, we go to court." That's in the back of my mind, so that's why I kind of hesitated.
You're worried about the terminology you use.
Well, that's, that's about right. Lynn?
I will say, you guys are all veterans, I'm not.
Well, you're on the planning board.
That's totally different.
Totally different, totally different.
That has nothing to do with what we do here.
I know, but you have an idea.
Nope. Nope, totally different. And I, I liked him's suggestion, because that would certainly help educate me as far as how you make a decision and what you base that decision on. Because I'm not always clear on what that is. So, having that discussion would certainly help me.
What I, I may do is, if I can find the time and I can find a good meeting sample, having been a former zoning board member in Concord, the process that they use and the deliberation that they do before making motions, I think would might be worthwhile for you guys to observe and watch. So, if I can find an online video to one of their recent meetings, just so you have a feel for how they do their deliberations, I think it might be useful.
And they deliberate right in front of...
They deliberate right in front of everybody.
We, we've done that.
Absolutely.
Which you should do.
Okay. And, you know, for what it's worth, with Fran gonna be gone for the next few months, don't worry, you won't be making any motions, Patrick, because you'll be chairing the meetings.
And to one other point, Rich, I'm really sorry that you feel that way. I hope that you don't resign, because you would, you'd be a great, you'd be a loss to this board, if you did.
You are a very valuable member, Rich.
And I can under, I can sympathize with the work schedule. Been there, and I, I really hope that you, you don't go that direction, because I think you, I think you're a good asset to the, to the board and, and the group, and I do value your opinion in, in your discussion during the meeting, so I just wanted to say that.
No, and, and I appreciate that, but the point that you made is a valid point. And it is, and I feel the same way. Like, and, and there was a specific case where I was told before the hearing that I'm officially nominated to give the bad news to a very large crowd of people. And I'm gonna be honest with you guys, I was pissed off. And I'm never gonna do that again. And if that means me leaving the group, I leave it.
It wasn't from this chair or vice chair that was, you were told that? No.
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 We were, we were all in the same room, we all know who said what.
But that, that was a different board.
That was not my choice.
Doesn't matter.
No.
Let me understand, if someone told you that you're gonna be the bad guy?
I was instructed, prior to a meeting, by legal counsel, that I make the vote.
Legal counsel?
Our legal counsel instructed that one person make the vote. And that person was to be me. And I had to deliver that to a very large audience of very angry people.
Why didn't you mention that to us?
Yeah. I don't even remember that.
I don't remember that at all.
That really blows my mind, because I mean, I want you to think about the one that we had counsel on, and there was a very large angry audience. And if you think back to that, if you guys don't remember me being instructed to be the one to deliver that, then, you know, I'm sorry, and I, I, I wasn't gonna say it, but, you know, Patrick, when you said what you said, that nerve got struck real deep, real deep.
Rich, it wasn't directed to you?
No, 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 I know, I know. I'm just saying that that was something that, that was...
But you will never be told that by any one of us.
Sure hope not.
Well, I didn't know that the legal coun, he said that in pub, at a regular meeting then. We're all sitting around the table, and he says, "Somebody has to do this, and you're the one." Am I correct?
Wait, 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 excuse me, excuse me. Are you discussing something that was done in a non-public session?
You're right, you're right, you're right.
I think this discussion should stop right now.
Right. Right, you're absolutely correct. I apologize, I didn't know that. I thought it was in public, I didn't know it was not in public. Oh, it was with the legal counsel?
Yes.
It shouldn't be followed up on infernal writing.
All right, stop as we go.
Minutes?
Okey-dokey.
I move the minutes of the zoning...
Well, we're not done with concern here.
Oh, sorry.
Tony have an issue?
Oh, I have an issue. Tim, I was wondering, the planning board chairman comes... Uh, Tim, I was wondering, the planning board chairman comes to you once a month and discusses the agenda? How come the ZBA chairman and the vice chairman does not discuss this agenda with you? I'm just curious.
We're, we're certainly open to doing so, it just, for whatever reason, has not been something that has been pursued beyond the couple of times when a former chair had specifically requested to do so before a meeting. The, the caution I have in doing it with the zoning board as opposed to the planning board is because of the quasi judicial nature of this board versus the planning board. We really can't guide or give you specific recommendations on the cases that you hear, whereas with the planning board, we're specifically making recommendations to the planning board and playing a much more active role in their process. So there's a very delicate balance in terms of what I can do with the zoning board versus what I can do with the planning board.
Well, I think you could just say, well, this petition will be coming up in October, this other petition will be coming up in October, and we'll have nine or eight petitions. So you're not really violating any laws at all.
No.
You're just spessing information.
In, in terms of the, getting the agenda out to Fran earlier, there was a miscommunication between my staff and I in terms of doing that for this month. We've had a new staff person start, and in the hubbub of doing that, plus interviewing for a new assistant planner to replace Donna, it completely slipped my mind to remind my staff, yes, we need to send this agenda out to the chairman before we publish it. It's been rectified, there are reminders set on their computers to do so from this point moving forward. I don't expect that's going to be an issue again.
Okey dokey.
Gee, can I make comments from home?
Technically call into the meeting, there is an allowance to do that under the statute.
Not the first month, not, not the first month, I'll tell you. Okay, is there anything else that the board would like to discuss?
Nope. What do I know?
Actually, you know what? Since I've made all my destructive comments, I thought I would make one constructive one. I think we should actually create some type of system where regardless of our opinion, we each take a turn, and so let's say there's five items, we just go down the row. And that way, good, bad, or indifferent, we have a system. And that way, we don't have to, you know, do any kind of singling out of any individuals for, for, in terms of deliberation. A discussion, yeah, that definitely needs to happen. But for the actual deliberation, I, I think that, you know, that's something that is, I mean, it's five of us and two of us here have an issue with it. And I think that the best way to overcome that issue is to create a strategy that will eliminate that from happening ever again. So if it means I go, then Lynn goes, then Patrick goes, then Tony goes, or, you know, whatever order we do, we pick an order predetermined, and either we start every meeting that way, or we just have a predetermined pathway so that we can, you know, each take a turn, and that way it makes it impersonal. That's my thought.
You know, my only comment to that would be if, in the case of tonight, when I voted or I made a motion to deny, and you, for, for me to say, or for Fran, or for whoever is the chair to say to you, you have to make a motion on this, and you're making a motion that is contrary to what you feel is.
Make the one that you feel.
Oh, make the one that you feel, okay.
Regardless of what the motion is. If you have a failed motion, you have a failed.
No one is ever going to be told how to make a motion, which way to make the motion.
Yeah. Because I made a motion that failed tonight, so I mean.
Okay, so then that's, because that, because that would go back to what you were just getting really angry about before, and I'm like, that's, you know, so I don't, I don't want to, you know, I just want to.
No, I just felt targeted in that incident, that's all.
No, I understand, I understand.
You will never, never be told how to make a motion. Any other items of concern by the board before we go into the minutes? I don't hear anything of, all right, go ahead, Lynn.
I'll move the minutes as distributed.
Printed?
As printed, printed and distributed for the, the Wednesday, August 26 meeting.
Any other board members have any corrections, concerns on this?
Tony seconds.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And motion?
To adjourn.
No, we're having so much fun. I'll, I'll move against that.
Okay, we're here for, we can be here for another while.
I second the motion to adjourn.
Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
410.
Right.
Whatever's in your heart.